You ready?
Yeah.
You gonna record it?
Yeah, I started recording.
Alright, do you want to introduce it?
This is a public hearing to review the action plan for the town's updated open space and rec plan. It was posted as a Parks and Land Use Committee meeting, but I do not believe we have a call of either board.
Nope.
So in that case, it's just us reviewing this, but we'll still record it, so we've got it all documented.
Want you to introduce yourself?
I'm Dan Byer, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation, also one of the commissioners.
And I'm Anne Mazer, the Chair of the Land Use Committee and the Community Preservation Committee. And so, so just for an introduction, the Open Space and Recreation Plan is a document that the town needs in order to apply for a lot of state grants, and every year it has to be updated, and so Dan and I have been working with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and others to pull the document together, and it's, it has all kinds of information on the open space in Mendon, the recreational facilities, and more than that, the history and the community setting, a whole environmental analysis of the land in Mendon, and the culmination of it is an action plan, you know, what we hope to do for the next seven years. And a lot of the information we got from the master plan that was sent out to every home, and we attended a lot of the meetings and made sure that there was questions in the master plan that we could use the information in the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Do you want to talk about the action plan?
I mean, I guess, yeah, so the action plan, it's called the seven-year action plan because generally they're ten-year plans, but we're partially into the next cycle, so I think we did that just to keep on the-
Another seven-year cycle.
So this is, this would be the twenty, technically the 2020 to 2030 Open Space and Rec Plan. So there's high-level goals, I'm trying to see how many, I believe there's four, four top-level goals, and then under each, under each goal is an objective, and then specific actions with identified responsible parties, their priority, timing, and suggested funding source. So I don't know, I mean, I think probably the best thing to do is just to go through each one of them.
Yeah, I think so. Have, have most people had a chance to look at them, or, I mean, we can just go through them?
I mean, I think, to me, I think the goal would be to go through them, and then if there's comments on specific ones, or if there's things that people think are missing, or-
Okay.
You know, a goal that's like totally out of whack.
And, and as we go through them, people should probably call it out, right? Talk at, I mean-
Yeah, if you want, or if you just chime in or use the raise hand, I'm gonna, I'll probably put this on the screen, so we can all look at this document. So goal number one is, oops, I already screwed up. Improve access to open spaces and recreation resources. So underneath that, the first objective is to identify gaps in accessibility and equity in utilizing these resources and develop plans to address these gaps. And then underneath that, there are four specific actions. Develop a town-wide sidewalk improvement and expansion plan, review progress that was made, that has been made with the Complete Streets Program, install sidewalk improvements along streets, identify the Complete Streets Plan that have not been repaired or constructed yet, continue to assess sidewalk conditions along the streets in Mendon for connection and expansion opportunities, and then the following responsible parties, priorities, all that. I'm gonna change this to conduct. I think my only comment on this is just, I mean, this is potentially a massive, massive investment, so I don't know if, you know, it is realistic that we're gonna be adding sidewalks anywhere in town? Or is it just, I don't know?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, it says to review the Complete Streets Program, so I think that it would be if we had funding, you know, in combination.
I don't know enough about Complete Streets to know where that is, I mean, that sounds like that's really something that hopefully the new town administrator will start investigating.
I think also, though, it's a good thing to keep, keep a lookout for, you know, keep it on there, just because, you know, like even when they're doing Route 16, just to make sure that the sidewalks, that there are sidewalks and they connect to other ones. And are in key places.
I was curious about sidewalks, if you don't mind. My name's Emily, I live on Blackstone Street, and I walk frequently in town, and then there are definitely some spots we found that I would consider dangerous for a pedestrian to be walking. I think the sidewalks would be a major improvement to the town for a number of reasons, especially around safety, but also health and wellness of the people that live here. So I understand that funding is obviously one of the key issues in terms of improving the sidewalks. Is this any, is this something that can be addressed through taxpayer funds, or something that can be voted on by the town, and which we could allocate additional funds in order to make this happen?
I mean, I think this plan is really just to make recommendations with regard to open space, so I think we're stating that it would be up to the Select Board, the Highway Department, Land Use, to take the next steps and implement them. Ultimately, they, the town could fund it, we could see grants.
Right, but, but if, you know, yes, if, if there was a real interest in it, it could be brought to town meeting, you know? If it was a high priority. Yep. And grants always-
Is there anything that I can do as like a resident of the town to, in order to help push this forward?
Yeah, definitely, I mean, definitely in terms of like attending, you know, meetings. Yeah, I'm not sure what the status of the Complete Streets is, but part of that was putting in, having a good walking-
Right.
-pedestrian, you know?
I mean, I think just had, keeping, you know, like Complete Streets is something that has kind of fallen off the radar, you know, and it really was volunteers trying to do it.
Yep.
You and Kathy. You know, I, I think it's important to bring these issues up to elected officials and, you know, in terms of discussing the longer-term priorities of the town, so I think, you know, to the speaker's point, I think it's important that, you know, that this should be in this plan then, because I think that was a big issue that came up in master plan too, was more sidewalks.
Yeah. I mean, what, what meetings would be good to attend? I mean, I mean, the Select Board, I mean, it's, it's good to bring information to them, if that, if there's a group that's concerned about that.
Okay.
You know, if you, if you were on the town website and you look at the calendar, you can look at the different boards' agendas, and so if you see anything that's related to that, you know, I would definitely attend that meeting.
Okay, I'll do that.
And, and you could bring it to a, a committee also.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it'd be worth, you know, like, so Complete Streets would be worth, you know, like, at some point saying, like, can we put this on an agenda?
Yeah.
Talk about what's the status, and maybe that needs to wait for the new administrator and all this change to be passed.
Yeah. And, and a lot of the work, Emily, is done by volunteers. You know, I mean, like, there's pretty much this whole Open Space and Recreation Plan, and just so many projects in town, so having people attend meetings is really important, and, you know, putting time in.
Okay. Well, I will definitely take note of the schedule going forward.
Yeah, and if you have questions, feel free to, you know, email us.
Okay.
You know, from, through the town website.
Phil had his hand up too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a question, and maybe I don't, it's the Complete Streets Plan, what's the goal? I mean, how many miles of unsidewalk area do we have as a town, which is quite a bit? And what would be the goal for sidewalks within the town? This talks about, and is it the only recreation area, open space and recreation area that we're looking at for sidewalks in this plan?
Well, I think what this is specifically stating is, you know, improving access to open space townwide, so making sure that there's sidewalks, so somebody could walk to the park, the trail, the whatever.
Yeah, it's like connecting, like, I, I think part of it is to connect places so people could walk to school, you know, to downtown, you know?
I think, yeah, I think those questions are, are much more detailed, that are far outside the scope of this, that I think that's what this Complete Streets Plan would entail, is what, you know, what are the priority locations, cost, et cetera? And I, there is that very preliminary thing, I, I think I've seen it, but it's been a few years now. But again, that was pretty high level too, I think it was just-
Okay, so if the Complete Streets really starts to identify the roads, towns, and roads and spots of towns where sidewalks would begin, and this is really just articulating to improve sidewalks throughout the town?
Yeah.
On a general term.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know a whole lot about it, I believe it's a federal grant program, was kind of my understanding.
Yeah, I think actually Kathy Schofield knows the most about it at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So then, alright, the next, the next objective under this same goal is enhancing accessibility features of these resources to ensure equitable access for all residents, and then under that, we called out ensuring all town-owned recreation facilities are ADA-accessible, reviewing the ADA transition plan, and implement the actions that have not yet been completed, install handicapped accessible parking space at the handicapped accessible playground in town, and then construct, construct an ADA-accessible trail, and this was, we modified this slightly, possibly abutting the new senior center in conjunction with their expansion project, and I believe that's it for this one.
I certainly support that one, sure.
I do have one change on this, Anne, I think items two and three are the same. I mean, we called out installing a handicapped accessible parking space, that's part of the transition plan, there's those things that need to get done. So I think, I would, I would just clear this out, because I think it just says the same thing twice, I mean, I think, unfortunately, there's a, there's a list of projects, we've done some of them, the beach improvement was, was a big step in the right direction. Most of it's just paving-
One of the ques-
...spaces and signage and stuff.
Yeah, and community preservation money can be used for, so the, making the ADA, like, recreation areas accessible, and also historical buildings, but-
Yeah, and some, I just, like, some funding has been allocated. This is one of those things, and I think it seemed really simple on paper, oh, put in a sidewalk, and then turned out to be far more complex and tied into a lot of issues with the parking lot.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, I was gonna mention, I'm not sure further down, I've forgotten, on this sheet of the, I talked about parking, but one of the major considerations that many of the senior citizens speak to is on the open spaces, insufficient parking to be able to get close to it. Even before you get to ADA-accessible, you need also other parking facilities to be able to get to it, rather than just park on the street. So I don't know if that's addressed anywhere, but, you know, parking lots at the entrances of these things would be interesting, rather than just park on the street.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's hard in some of the areas, but, but that's a good point, and that's-
I don't know where you put the point, I just throw it out there as a-
No, that's a good point, I'm, I'm looking at the plan, we should, as we go through, that might fall under one of the later maintenance sections, but- We should call it out.
Okay.
Because that, that's a big, I mean, that's a big problem for everybody, it's a huge problem at the park, we don't have anywhere near parking. So that's, I think that's important.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely something to look into, sometimes the terrain just isn't good for parking, but there are some areas where we can, you know, at parking, so.
Out of curiosity, does ADA compliance for the trail imply that it would be paved?
Yeah, I think that's the direct, yeah, that's where I, my direction, I was going with this, I don't know if there's other alternatives out there, but I think-
Not the pact, like, um-
I, I don't know enough about it, maybe that would be sufficient, but I think having at least one trail that is accessible to someone in, in a wheelchair or-
Yeah.
-type of mobility device that isn't just, you know, a path in the woods.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
I think there's a definite need there. And I think, there were some federal grant funds for that too, that we could explore, and that, I know Patrice just sent that email the other day about, I mean, that would be cool. Especially if it ties into another town. The state likes that stuff. Okay, I think Jason just put a link in the, into the thing about Complete Streets.
Oh, okay.
Good to know. Yeah, I, Kathy seemed to be the expert on it, I think it was one of those things that we kind of started work on, but there wasn't, you know, there was just so many things going on. So between, you know, maybe between the new administrator and maybe, you know, John or whoever, the-
Yeah, I think, I think Highway Department is involved with the Complete Streets, so yeah.
Can really focus on that, I mean, I know, I do know he's, they're doing some sort of a, a new audit of all the pavement, John mentioned that the other week. So that may include other information. Alright, so then, the next is increase public awareness of available open space and recreation resources throughout outreach and education, and we highlighted update existing trail and recreation facility maps as needed, advertise open space and rec events such as the hike challenge with website updates, newsletters, other outreach, create an online interactive map of the open space and rec opportunities in town. I do think, I mean, this is, it's kind of been ongoing, it would be nice if we could partner with somebody that had GIS skills to, you know, we're like so close, we have all those individual maps, and maybe even, I wonder if we could get CPA funds towards CMRC hours, and just have Matt help, to get it all on one sort of interactive map, or... I think that would be a, a big help here.
Would that person have to be a Mendon resident?
No, if you know of somebody that has GIS skillset that wants to donate their time.
Oh, yeah, we'd, yeah, definitely.
I know someone that does map design for his, like, career, so I could talk to him and see if he'd be interested, I'm not sure, it would be a shot in the dark, but-
Yeah. I mean, we've been, CMRC has helped us with some stuff, but I, you know, I think finding, you know, somehow, and I think the town needs to look at some GIS things too, but-
Yeah, okay. I'll reach out.
And I think just, you know, the hike challenge, we should look at doing more of that stuff, that seemed to be-
Yes, yeah.
Very successful.
Yep, and have, yeah, hikes on the properties.
So then, goal, or, I don't even remember what these things are now, yeah, goal-
On that last one, can you go back, what was the topic of the last one? The increase-
Yep.
-public awareness, outreach and education. I, I think that there are teachers that want to do the outdoor education, you know, and especially with the Van der Suus property, I think that might be a, a good objective to add, because MSCO is so close to that property and-
Something like this maybe, oops. Explore partnership with local educators. I don't know how to phrase this, but I'll think of something.
To, something like to increase outdoor education opportunities? Because I know there's teachers at, at MSCO that are really interested in environmental issues and would like to do outdoor activities.
Yeah, I'll just leave it at that, so, and explore partnership with the Menard Regional School District, other local schools, to create outdoor education opportunities.
Yeah.
Maybe just- I'm sure there's grants for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, that's a good one. Alright, so then, the next goal is expand the amount of and improve the condition of passive and active recreation opportunities, and then underneath that, the first objective is identify the recreation interests and preferences of residents to help create new opportunities. There's a huge list here, identify opportunities to install bike lanes in more areas of town, connecting open spaces into bike paths in neighboring towns, continue efforts to construct a cross-town, a cross-town trail, identify lands to acquire to connect existing trails, improve outreach and awareness of the canoe kayak put-in at the town beach to encourage utilization, investigate constructing a splash pad in town, renovate tennis multi-use courts with pickleball lines, create a priority list of lands to acquire for recreation purposes, develop new fields to support the growing needs of the community, work with the Menard Regional School District and Town of Upton to develop new sports and recreation facilities and/or support the development of a turf field complex. I'm wondering if this should just say athletic field complex.
Yeah.
So I think in this, we just tried to pull out some things that were highlighted in the master plan, I don't know, maybe if some of these are too specific, like, maybe we could combine some of these just to shorten the list a little bit.
I mean, it's, I think it's nice to have them written out for ideas, and if somebody's interested in going with a certain project, you know?
Well, I'm wondering, like, we could combine four and five, because some of these are in progress, some of them are, you know, like, I mean, as much as a splash pad might be interesting, I have a feeling it would be incredibly cost prohibitive. And there's other things, like ice skating rinks that have come up. Like, maybe, maybe it should be more general about, I don't know.
Or you could list-
I know, I know that, um, one of the reasons people are interested in splash pads is like, a way to cool off and, and help with high temperatures in the summer, so maybe there's a way that you could phrase it where, you know, it's like a cooling service of some kind, I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a good point, I mean, because the summers are getting hot, you know? And, and kids love those.
I lived in Boston before we moved here, and there was one in town in West Roxbury that was just constant all day long being used, so I definitely think, uh, kids would love it.
So maybe you could add to the splash pad, or, or, you know, or other activities, you know, for cooling in the hot summers, or something like that?
Sorry, I'm reading this. Yeah, I'm wondering, because the next one too, like, some of this stuff crosses over.
Do we have tennis courts?
Yes, at the park facility, there's two courts.
Right, sure, okay.
Across from the beach there, yeah, and the basketball court.
And there are also, the town meeting voted to buy pickleball nets, and so hopefully by the spring, that'll be available also, to use on the tennis courts.
Okay, I might change, now that I'm looking at this, I wonder if this should be more general, of saying, you know?
We can make a lot of-
Expand use of existing facilities.
Why don't we work on the wording afterwards and just kind of get through the chart, Dan?
Yeah, okay, I just had a note there. And then I know, I, I don't know if anybody joined from that group, I did reach out, I know there's a very large group working on a potential proposal related to the schools.
Oh, the turf fields, yeah.
In terms of, yeah, my very high-level understanding is that the goal is to, to come up with a plan for some sort of an athletic facility for the school. But I, I think I would just put it on here, is, you know, I think it's something that would come to both towns, and would probably look for support at the ballot, you know, at some point when they're ready to make that proposal.
What do they currently have? I'm, I'm not familiar with the school enough to know.
So I don't know, it's, we have a school district, so they are kind of a separate entity from Mendon and Upton, so you've got a separate elementary school in each town, and then a shared middle school and high school. They have a large number of fields that I'm not gonna try and rattle off. I think from my experience, you know, I think the, the concern is that we don't necessarily have top of, you know, like, game fields, you know, they have, they have a very soccer field, I don't think our football program really, you know, I think they're at MSCO on that field, which is rough, I think that baseball and softball are, you know, lacrosse, some of these newer sports are relegated to these backfields.
Yeah, most of the fields in town are, the Schofields are pretty rough shape, is the best way to describe them.
Are pretty what?
Rough shape.
Yeah, I mean, and I, this comes up later on too, I think, you know, so are the, the town fields in terms of, you know, improvements that could be made.
I think, you know, I was thinking also, we should include their coordinating with the NEFC fields, because they're there, and when they're not using them, they're, you know, having the town teams come on, and the school teams use it, they use it for tournaments, and I, I think we should continue doing that, because the fields are there, you know?
Maybe that falls under this one, to somehow, you know, exploring partnerships with private, you know, public-private.
Is that the soccer complex that's like on the Bellingham line?
Yeah, yeah. And they're used quite a bit, and, you know, hopefully that can continue.
Yeah, well, and there's other things, you know, every, every now and then, there's proposals that come down the line, that, you know, somebody wants to build a field or something, so maybe there's opportunities there.
Yep.
So then, alright, then the next one, assess the condition of and develop a plan to improve existing recreational opportunities, so create an assessment and maintenance plan for town-owned recreation facilities, create a full-time parks maintenance position to improve maintenance of the town's open space and rec facilities, install lights on existing athletic fields to expand usage and safety, improve ADA accessibility at Founder's Park, I think this would fall into the previous ADA issues that we talked about, improve par, oh yeah, here we go, improve parking at Memorial Field, Veterans Field Complex, and Grover Field Complex, but this is specific to athletics, so maybe we should call out open space, and like, put this same thing in-
Sure, yep.
-related to open space.
Yep.
Forget.
Okay.
Make renovations and improvements to the town beach facility, consider improving this space for future outdoor concerts, I guess we already did that, but it's still on, there's still work ongoing, repair the existing walking track and install outdoor exercise equipment along the course. This is Veterans Park, this was done, although it could be improved, I'm not sure I would call this out at this high level, personally.
Can, can I ask, sorry, I don't mean to draw a meeting out or anything, but I'm just curious, with the town beach access, I know it's not accessible off-season because of lifeguarding and that kind of thing, is there a way to make it accessible?
So that, that there's a path next to the beach facility that's meant for-
Right, for like canoe access.
-yak in the water, that sort of thing, that is open year-round, there's no restrictions on that. We, the beach facility itself has traditionally only operated when it's staffed, I know it's come up, personally, my thoughts on it, I think we would, it would result in some significant vandalism and issues there.
Okay.
I, I mean, I think, I, I don't know how these other towns manage, I would, you know, love to explore more, I just know, like, we have problems when we're open, with people trying to bring in- Um, I just know, like, we have problems when we're open, with people trying to bring in coolers and grills and, and whatever.
Sure.
Uh, you know, I'd, oh, I'd rather see if there's a way we can expand our hours and staff it longer.
Yeah, that would be nice. I'm also just thinking about, like, a direct waterfront access for people who live in the town apart from, you know, the four-foot new access ramp. Where you can enjoy that public space in a way. Uh, the beach is beautiful, by the way, wonderful renovation, so it looks great. It would just be so nice if we could actually, like, access it. That's all.
Yeah. Just looking at these real quick, and then I think, oh, increase the number of, the, increase the number and variety of recreational programs, events and activities to engage residents of all ages and abilities. So, develop organized sports programs for adults, expand existing youth sports programs for all ages. Identify a location and install an ice skating rink in the winter. Oh, see, I think.
Would that go with the splash pad maybe, or, you know?
Continue to host and expand walking tours, hiking events, improve outreach, increase programming and event opportunities at the town beach. So I'm gonna, sorry, scroll over the place, I'm gonna get rid of this, because I think it's listed down below. Ice skating is covered here. And then I don't know if there's any comment on this, oh, I, I skipped over his comments. Tom, Tom Bellant had reached out, one of the parks commissioners, and wanted to specifically call out, um, can we add anything that addresses the need to improve infrastructure and systems to ensure sufficient maintenance for our fields and open space? So I don't know if that would fall under this first, create an assessment and maintenance plan. And I had asked him for some clarification, he couldn't be here tonight. If that needed to be called out, but I just mentioned Tom, I came in.
I think also the, you, you say, you, before you said, you know, having a full-time park maintenance position, wouldn't that sort of, you know, be the person that would, you know, ma- make sure that the fields and, you know, equipment is in good condition?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, I mean, from the parks perspective, I think, you know, there's a, not a lot of funding for, for, um, I don't know, what did he say? Like, I think that the idea was to call out some of the facility, you know, we need a garage, we need equipment. And I don't know if that's necessarily, unless that still falls under this, maybe it should be further, you know. I'll have to think about that.
Okay.
Because we didn't say anything about facilities in here, like, you know, administrative facilities, not recreational facilities. And then, alright, then the third goal is protect the natural resources in Mendon, including forest, farmland, water resources and wildlife habitats. Pushing this up a little bit, page to make it. And then promote sustainable use of natural resources, including responsible land management, conservation of biodiversity and reduction of waste and pollution. Um, so we called out, create a priority list of lands to acquire for conservation purposes, acquire valuable land as noted in the BioMap 3 program and properties mentioned in the master plan surveys. Help local farmers access and or preserve agricultural lands. Utilize APR, CR, grant funding in or chapter sixty-one to support these efforts.
I think also what should be added to that, and I don't know if it's this section or the next section, but, um, improving the quality of the, the, um, lake water at Lake Nitmunk. I think that should be a high prior, you know, like, in there somewhere. And that's protecting, you know.
Maybe it should fall under this third one, implement sustainable infrastructure solutions to reduce runoff and protect water quality.
Yeah.
Even though it's, I think the lake is more than just some infrastructure issues.
Yeah, I, I was to specifically say the lake though, because that, that has the public beach and, you know.
Protect the natural resources, promote sustainable, yeah, maybe it should fall under, well, maybe it should fall under this first one. Sorry, I keep scrolling. I'm just gonna put, um, so something, something specifically about Lake Nitmunk as a whole.
Yep.
Which I, I think, you know, we're working towards with this task force, and I think there's hopefully a more focused approach on this.
Uh, oh, someone have their hand up?
Oh, sorry.
Tom?
It's hidden.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello, um, yeah, just to mention with regard to that topic of, um, the lake. For those that may not be aware, the, the Board of Health had, uh, has taken some direction there as well, with regard to some oversight, with regard to helping to improve the lake quality. The Lake Nitmunk Task Force is the key group. Uh, it's a representation of various, uh, departments in the town that make up that task force. So ultimately, they would have, uh, you know, the overall, um, on trying to, uh, make any kind of improvements or provide any kind of directions they'd like to take, but I do know that from a BOH perspective, we actually had, um, increased our budget this past year to add to the testing component beyond just doing the beach, but to also implement additional testing throughout the entire lake to try to help address that, uh, that water quality part.
Yeah, that was fantastic, and I'm really glad the Board of Health is moving forward with that, that's great.
You know, I'm thinking, looking at this chart as a whole, I'm thinking this lake should be its own objective. One of these, like, where it's A, B, C. Because you're, the whole section is protect natural resources. Then we're saying promote the sustainable use of natural resources. Monitor and control species, you're talking about habitats, and then implement infrastructure runoff and water quality. But I think maybe the lake as a whole should be its own specific objective under this goal, because I, I think it is a pretty big topic. Um, I'll, I can, I'll slot it in later, but.
Okay.
And then underneath that, perhaps we should call out, you know, some of the more specific things that were done, like, like, um, you know, Tom just mentioned.
Yep.
Testing. Or whatever the thing Carl emailed about. The Water for Protection Act, you know, exploring.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. I'll, I'll, I'll think about this a little more, how to put a few things under it, but I, I think, yeah, that seems to be a really big issue. Maybe it's worth highlighting. And then, oh, implement sustainable infrastr- oh, no, monitor and control invasive species, protect wildlife habitats, promote habitat restoration enhancement. We flag the education program on invasive species and create invasive species best practices and distribute.
I'd, I'd like to, um, add to that.
Yeah.
To, um, expand the volunteer land steward program, because that's really worked out well, all the volunteers helping out, you know, with the trails and this type of thing.
I think that's a great idea, um, there's a program called Nix the Knotweed, that's in Connecticut, that I follow to try and get rid of the knotweed in our backyard.
Oh.
That's one of those notes.
Oh, I know, it's such a, a problem, and there's certain areas in some of, like, the edges of the open space properties and, yeah.
Like, I walk every day on Emerson, and it's just like, you know, hardly anything you can do about it, it's out of control. Um, so, you know, as a communal effort to get a, a group together on knotweed specifically would be nice.
Yeah, um, we, we, we put down, Leah, Bada Whiting and I, put down some, um, grid, like, wire kind of fencing, I think it's called, like, hardware cloth, that was like, uh, half inch or quarter inch. And in the springtime, uh, if you put it down where the knotweed is, it grows through the grid, and then eventually it just, like, strangles itself, and supposedly after several years, it, it might kill it, so we're kind of, we have a couple plots where we're doing that and hoping that we have some success with that. Because that would be a somewhat manageable way to control some of it.
I would combine that with what we're doing in our backyard, which is working so far, is, um, brown tarps. That just kind of bakes it underneath. So it stops it from regrowing, so I think a combined effort there would probably work, I might try that next year. Spring, okay, sorry.
No, that's good, thanks.
I just don't know if this is the right place to put it, that's all, but I think that's a good.
Well, I think it's in there, you have.
Like, an invasive species more, more specific. Yeah.
Sorry, take us.
Well, we could, I'd like to.
But that should be in there somewhere.
Yeah, I'd like to put it somewhere, so as long as you have it in red, we can figure that out.
I just, I'm wondering, I'm looking at these objectives, I'm wondering if we want to restate these A, B, C, D objectives a little differently.
Why don't we figure that afterwards?
Yeah.
Like, just get the content, you know, for this meeting.
I think that is important, and then the other, so this, um, implement sustainable infrastructure solutions to reduce stormwater runoff, protect water quality, create and distribute lawn care best practices. Um, refer to and implement the suggested actions listed in the MVP report. Promote low-impact development and green stormwater infrastructure. Educate boards and developers about low-impact development. I just thought of this now, I probably want to review some of the MS four permitting stuff, that, that group that we're on. And see if there's anything else that needs to go in here related to the town's storms, so the, MS four is basically the, the state permit given to the town for all of our catch basins, and there's a whole bunch of things that we gotta jump through, and a new thing is identifying locations and for potential improvements. So there might be something in here that, you know, implement recommendations from that plan. Because I think that was, you know, we were very fortunate, this work on this campus tied into that. But they're kind of looking for the towns to look at town-owned properties and identify those sorts of projects. And at least document whether they're feasible and what they might cost. And then finally leverage grants, private donations and other funding sources to support these efforts. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And then the final goal is preserve Mendon's sense of community. But encourage community participation in the development and stewardship of its open space, recreation, cultural and historic resources. Um, I think this is where the land steward thing should go.
Yep.
Anyway, so empower land use community leaders, system implementing actions in this plan. Start sustainability group in town that could focus on healthy landscaping, pollinator gardens, other environmental friendly initiatives. Um, I think I would add that expand the land use steward program here.
Okay.
Then we said, develop and promote community events and activities that celebrate the town and its resources. Investigate an outdoor common space to hold future events. Investigate hosting regular outdoor concerts, movie nights at the town beach. I think I'm gonna just, this should just say, events. Investigate a location to host a regular farmer's market with local vendors. Um, and I think a few of those were items that did master plan quite a bit. You know, I know we've seen that with that, the Rock the Block event, I think there's definite interest in these sorts of events at the fair. Foster partnerships with local businesses and organizations to support these efforts. Investigate a program to house canoes, kayaks and paddleboards at the lake for rental use. Support the school district's initiative to construct a multi, so this is in here multiple times. I don't know if this belongs in this section.
Okay.
Prioritize sustainable and affordable housing opportunities, encourage open space design. Promote the use of open space community subdivisions and help make the process flow well for the developer of town, or to develop affordable housing that is energy efficient, uses blah, 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 blah. Does this belong, should this stay in this, is this part of the open space and rec plan?
Yeah, I know.
Housing?
I know, not really.
Not that it's not important.
I mean, the open space subdivision fits in it because that's the open space part, but, yeah, I was thinking, maybe some of this we should take out.
I'm reading that it says pedestrian-friendly and stormwater infrastructure, so it might be more specific about, any new development needs to be conscientious, um, of that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, maybe get, maybe this is more, and tie into some of the discussion we've had about open space subdivisions and.
Yeah.
Like, the whole, the whole goal of this campus was to try and educate, you know, so like, when something before the planning board, you could say, you know, go look outside, there's an example of green infrastructure. So maybe this needs to be more general. And then, expand knowledge and awareness of Mendon's historical and cultural resources. We listed provide engaging workshops and presentations to show residents the rich history of Mendon, including the agrarian background of Mendon. Could be worded differently. Look for buildings and landscapes to preserve using CPA funds and grants. That's it. This, I think, both of these, I think, could be restated a little differently, like.
Yep.
Maybe, you know, encourage historic preservation or something more along those lines of, you know. And actually, I don't know where it fits in here. The, um, the scenic road bylaw and potential future bylaws regarding clear-cutting trees, something like that, I feel like those were topics that have come up.
That's true, yeah.
That probably would fall under one of these goals. Maybe not, maybe not this one where you, that's less about sense of community. Right. About open space, but.
But it, I think that would be appropriate for this. Because that fits under the open space.
And then I think that's it. Into community explore, yeah.
Are there any other comments or requests that people, you know, or something else that people want to address?
Oh, I guess this is Phil again, the only thing that comes to mind is, there are a lot of good goals and objectives there. And I know there's high, median, and low, I think, probably. But if you look at the size and scope of the town and what is really the, you know, most critical priorities, and setting some kind of sequence of events, is that what's the most important out of all those things, because you can't do them all. And that's the only thing that I, when I read this the first time, I was missing some of those things, is, was the town's real priority? I know the master plan that we put together was interesting, but it's all the participants were very, very low. From the overall six thousand people, two thousand families. I don't know how we do that. Set a priority across these different planes, others would say we're gonna address them generically over the next seven years.
Yeah, I mean, I, I doubt, like, all of these goals will not be achieved.
There's no question about it, I mean, it can't be. I mean, it, it would be nice, but it's not unlimited resources and unlimited volunteers or unlimited funding, so, I don't know. I guess it sets an expectation, this is what we'd like to do, but I'm looking at the practical side of it, what is the most important, what is achievable? Year-term, midterm, long-term, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how to state that, Ann, but that's one of the things that I found was troublesome to me in trying to digest it. Great goals, great ideas, but we don't have the funds, resources and people to pull it off.
Sometimes the things that move forward is if there are interested people in town or volunteers that go with it, like, you know, you with the senior center. So, lots of times, the goals that get done are the ones that people move, you know, take the initiative and move it forward.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, but it, you know, it's the A-type personalities that will drive some of those things, but it may not be the need of the town. I don't know how to address that.
Yeah, I mean, we really did, um, the master plan survey had really good participation, and so we really looked at the results of what people said in, in, in those surveys. And so a lot of these goals and objectives reflect that.
Okay. I guess it'd be nice, it'd be nice to be able to say, by twenty twenty-five, what are the top three things that we should, it'd be a must to do if you're a rec or need to do? And twenty twenty-seven, here's the next batch. I don't, I don't know if we can slice it that way, because you're right, it depends on who picks up the ball and runs with it.
Yeah, they, they, they do have dates in, on the, um, action plan, so it's.
But that's where I got, that is where I got confused, because even looking at the dates, I don't think we can achieve all the things we. But that's where I got, that is where I got confused, because even looking at the dates, I don't think we can achieve all the things we want to do for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Year terms. I don't, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm. Maybe I'm naive for this, but I don't, there's a lot of stuff there.
Well, maybe I think, you know, we could go back, you know, maybe the things, only the things that are. Only the things that are realistically achievable should be marked with a high priority.
Yeah.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
At least that might help, because I think that's a good, it's funny, this kind of ties into the conversation we had at the CPA meeting, and my gada gada. Um, you know, I think that's a big concern is.
Yeah, and I think for the purpose of the plan for the state, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, you know, we can make all these lists, but, you know, we gotta actually coordinate and do the work, and, and that's what I think. You know, I mean, I. Like with the ADA stuff, it's, you know, it was called out last time, but it's just kind of stalled out. You know, and in that case, you know, it's this lack of, lack of staffing, lack of funding.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe, you know, at least flag things with high priority that are, you know, these are critical items.
Yep, I agree.
And I think, you know, for a master plan to deal with the state, right, I'm sure you need to have a lot of good things on the, on the plans for the state for the, for them to approve it. You gotta fill it up, but I mean, maybe it's the side list of what we're really gonna try to achieve. The highs, as you said, Ann, I don't know. Just a thought.
Oh, no, no, it's good.
Well, it's, like, some, and some of these are ongoing, which I think can be confusing, like, I almost would change the priority. Ongoing for a couple of these.
That's a good point.
That's something, I don't know, I'll have to think about it better way to phrase that.
Yep. Alright, anything else? Any other comments? The one thing I will say also, that this is sort of like a, um, an, uh, a plan that is ongoing. And. Uh, will be updating it and working on it the next seven years, so it's not. You know, like it's written in stone, the copy that goes to the state is, but, um.
Well, I think, like, when I wrote the grant for the field lights, that's one of the questions that they ask you is to identify how this grant. Fits into, fits into your, your open space and rec plan and then fits into the state's plan.
Yep.
So the goal is to be able to go to the state and say, hey, we're asking you for funding for X. Here's, you know, where we identified it as a priority in our community.
Yep.
Um, and that's why I think in some cases we should take out some of these very specific things and make them a little more general.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where we're not, you know, it's not just pickleball, it's let's see if we can expand to multiple new sports.
Mm-hmm.
You know, at least for, you know, just in one example.
Yeah.
But yeah, that, that's a really good point, and that, and. And we did try to focus on areas that we think in the future we might be writing grants for, so that we can refer back to the open space plan and say, you know, it's in our goals.
Yeah, makes sense.
I do, I think this is helpful too, to kind of focus our kind of priorities here.
Yeah.
Because it's easier.
Oh, no, that's a good document.
You know, I think like, you know, with this recent land purchase, you know, or deal, you know, what are we gonna do with the property?
Mm-hmm.
But we could say, oh, well, you know, we need accessible trails, we need outdoor education, things like that.
Yep. Right, um, any other comments?
I don't see any. I don't, let me just check the chat and see if there's anything else.
Oh, okay.
Let's just, um, another factor would be to, another factor would be to project the line items. Okay, that's a good point, to identify things that have realistic funding.
Yeah.
I mean, as much as I, you know, and maybe it's my, you know, I, I'm not sure the town can afford sidewalks as much as we probably do need them.
Yeah.
You know? So maybe, you know, maybe there's a very small achievable point of that that is realistic. Um, that's a good, we just kind of tagged funding sources on these. Yeah, and I, just to confirm, so I, other than the, the one comment from Tom, I did not receive any other written comments, I don't know if you did.
No.
I know, I think Parks is gonna actually meet next week and go over this again with the updates, because Tom couldn't be here tonight. And then I think maybe your, I think Land Use is gonna meet as well.
Yep, and if anybody has other items, they can, you know, email us. Because we're still working on the open space plans, pretty much done, but. But we, we can include more comments. Right, I think we're all set.
Yeah, I think that's it, unless, um, anyone else has any other feedback, it looks like somebody's maybe typing something, but.
Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate the input, it's helpful.
Thank you, thank you for having it.
Thank you, Ann, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, guys, good job.
Definitely.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Good night.
Yeah. Guess you can stop recording, right?
Yeah, all I gotta do on this one. Can find it. Stop recording.